Okay, good. Okay, the time is now seven o'clock, 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene back into open session. We want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. And just a reminder that the meetings of the boards are open to the public, but they are not a meeting of the public. Just want to be mindful to everybody that there are students and other guests present, so to maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disrupted behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, we will go to our first item, which if you guys would, please stand with me. For those that can't stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
Order, colors. Ready, face. Forward, march. Ready, face. Ready, face. Forward, march. Ready, face. Ready, step. Right, face. Forward, march.
We'd ask you to please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. May be seated. I guess Dr. Fagan, do we have any commendations or recognitions?
Yes, thank you. First, we'd like to start with our inspiring moments. Last school year, students from Summer Creek High School and Kingwood Park High School initiated a project to apply their learning to a real-world challenge. These students envisioned building a community of micro-homes for homeless veterans. Since beginning their project, the students have made many presentations to businesses and community leaders, been featured on the TV news, and continue to make progress every day as they take their learning beyond the walls of our classrooms. I am proud to show off the ongoing initiative of Students Helping Veterans: Big Heroes, Tiny Homes.
Students Helping Veterans: Big Heroes, Tiny Homes is a collaborative project between Kingwood Park High School and Summer Creek High School.
Our goal is to house homeless veterans here in Houston, and there's lots of them.
Homelessness is a problem that all large cities face. In the case of veterans, we also find that there are quite a few veterans who, while they could get help from their families, they don't want to burden their families. And that's something that we're trying to fix.
So whenever we really thought about things, we came to realize that giving them a home, giving them a shelter, was the best way to go about this. Because a home, if taken care of, can last a lifetime.
The process started with the idea. The idea to build a tiny home. And so from there, what does a tiny home entail? What kind of things make a tiny home tiny? What kind of things help it not feel so tiny?
It's very different. You're doing adult work. It's not like, oh, this is one, two, three. Now figure out another way to solve for three. No, this is not trying to figure new things out based on information you've been given. This is, this is an idea. You need to go solve for it, figure it out, get your information, make sure it's accurate. Because this is something that we're presenting to the mayor of Humble and to the way home. These are professionals that are seeing it, so it has to be perfect.
The architects look at our drawings and our models, and they make sure that the building is going to be safe, stable, and it really meets the needs of the person that's going to live there.
We've been working with them for a while now. It started last spring, looking at their tiny homes and giving them some design direction. And then as we've met this semester, we've talked to them about the details and how it all fits together.
This is the member.
I've seen these kids come from an idea to wanting to implement that idea, to the architecture that they're trying to learn about, to now they're actually demonstrating what they've learned.
Well, there are a lot of pieces that are involved. First off, we have our architecture students who are obviously working to make sure that we have a house to build. And we have students that are working together to create a budget, students that are working to make models to show to people.
So we have a $25,000 budget for one house that will be used on each campus and will be used throughout the years as we build a house every year.
I just can't wait to be able to walk into this house and hopefully the veteran who gets to live in it loves it as much as we do.
To watch something that was all hypothetical turn into a legitimate substance, have these tiny homes do ground breakings, I think for both campuses, it has really been an honor to be a part of.
We're learning together and we're helping people together.
Well, it doesn't seem that long ago when they pitched this idea to me, there were a few other folks in the room, and we're like, sure, absolutely, go for it, let's try it. And it's come so far in such a small amount of time. The dedication to this project is incredible, and the learning is even better. I would like to recognize some of the participants with us here tonight. I'm going to ask Assistant Principal Al Segura, Architecture Teacher, James Gaylord, and Student Leadership Teacher Julie Samuel to stand with their Summer Creek and Kingwood Park students. Okay, now I'd like to invite Jerry Monverin to present our first superstaffers for the 2018-19 school year. And the sponsor for this month's Superstaffer Awards is the Humble ISD Education Foundation. And joining us tonight is Foundation Board Member Bonnie Longin. As she comes up, let me start with the elementary superstaffer for tonight, which is Christina Rivera from Whispering Pines Elementary. Joining Christina up front is Principal Wendy Anaya. As they're coming up for pictures, let me read about some of the things that was written about Christina. Christina is one of the hardest-working people at Whispering Pines Elementary and is greatly appreciated. The beginning of the year is always so hectic, and she maintains her positive attitude through it all. She knows the families by name and is always very supportive of our staff. Christina is always willing to help parents navigate the registration process so they feel welcome to our school. She interacts well with the students and supports our teachers in a dependable, caring, and warm-hearted manner. Congratulations, Christina. Being honored as a secondary superstaffer tonight is Lori Wilson from Kingwood Middle School. Joining Lori up front is Assistant Principal James Pascal. Let me read what was written about Lori as she comes up. Ms. Lori Wilson works with the 7th and 8th Grade Reading Language Art Students and Teachers at KMS. In addition to individualized support for students, she implements student-centered instruction for both whole group and small group learning. She works tirelessly to make sure our students have all the necessary tools needed to be successful. Lori is quick to jump in, provides assistance to her colleagues, and is extremely helpful and patient. Lori has been instrumental in helping our new 7th Grade Rela Team adapt to the systems and processes in place at KMS. If she doesn't know the answer to a question, she makes a point to find the answer in a timely manner and ensures the students' needs are met. Congratulations, Lori. And then being honored tonight as a support superstaffer is Martha Gonzalez, the Head Custodian at an Instructional Support Center. Joining us up front is Jessica Mata. Is she here tonight? Okay, so Melissa Lee, would you like to come up? And Kenny Kendrick, thank you very much. Appreciate y'all coming up. As you come up, let me read about Martha. She's been an amazing head custodian at the ISC for years. However, her determination to go above and beyond for the team and the district this past year during Harvey was truly evident. She was very helpful in getting the ISC back up and running. She is truly a team member who takes pride in ensuring that everything at the ISC is perfect for all the employees who work there and for all the visitors to the building. She's always looking for new ways to make the ISC a fabulous facility, and we are honored to have Martha on our team. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, last month, we recognized Secondary Teachers of the Year. Tonight, we will celebrate our Elementary Teachers of the Year. Assistant Superintendents for Elementary School Kathy Rolla and Lucy Schultz will come to the podium to introduce our Elementary Teachers of the Year.
We have such outstanding elementary teachers. It's such an honor to recognize you tonight. When I call your name, you will just come up here and get your plaque. Tascasita Springs, Cornelia Davis. Deerwood Elementary, Mary Torres. Eagle Springs Elementary, Deborah Haydenan. Foster Elementary, Carol Robinson. Green Tree Elementary, Patty Ciotti. Groves Elementary, Amanda Kopp. Ms. Kopp is also being honored as District Elementary Teacher of the Year. Jack Fields Elementary, Elaine Hallford. Lakeland Elementary, Nikki Miles. Ms. Miles is not here tonight, but we will get her plaque to her. Oaks Elementary, Jeanette O. Lenny. Park Lakes Elementary, Travis Cedarbo. Pine Forest Elementary, Darcy Scharf. Ridge Creek Elementary, Kim LeBlanc. River Pines Elementary, Madison Roden. Shadow Forest Elementary, Shawna McGrath. Woodland Hills Elementary, Kimberly Wallace. Thank you and congratulations. Assistant Superintendent Lucy Schultz will now recognize the other elementary teachers.
Our group is so large, we're gonna have to take two pictures. I am honored to recognize our extraordinary teachers. From Bear Branch Elementary, Stacy C. Elm Grove Elementary, Tricia Zinnaker. Ms. Zinnaker is also being honored as a district finalist. Fall Creek Elementary, Susan Gonzalez. Hidden Hollow Elementary, Brooke A. Bear. Humble Elementary, Broderick Lindsay. Coach Lindsay is also being honored as a district finalist. Lake Shore Elementary, Pamela Julian. Maple Brook Elementary, Audie Huberty. Northbelt Elementary, Carla Craig. Oak Forest Elementary, Emily Fortner. Summerwood Elementary, Nicole Edwards. Timbers Elementary, Carmen Goss. Whispering Pines Elementary, Nadia Campbell. Willow Creek Elementary, Kimberly Smith. And Ms. Smith could not be here tonight, but we will get her plaque to her.
I want to say while they're lining up that Darcy Scharf was also honored as district finalist, and Shawna McGrath also honored as district finalist.
So as we finish up pictures, I know our teachers may need to leave early to get ready for those students, bright and early tomorrow morning. So as we finish up pictures, let's give them one more big round of applause. Congratulations. This is like a passing period. There's a celebration out there. You gotta wait. Okay. Humble ISD is fortunate to have its own police force full of dedicated officers that serve and support our students and staff every single day. Chief Solomon Cook is here to introduce a special guest with us tonight from the FBI.
Order, trustees, Dr. Fagan, honored guests. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight to recognize some of our great officers. As Chief of Police for School District Police Department, that is the best ISD Police Department in the state of Texas, we are very proud. Our people always stand up to stand above the others. They work hard. Our officers are very unique tonight because they live in the community, their children go to school here, and they are vested here. So they are really, really the type of officers that we want. I could stand here all day, but I don't have the time to praise them because they really do fantastic work. We're honored tonight to have a representative from the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Assistant Special Agent in Charge Darrell Wagner. He will say a few words.
All right, thank you so much for having us here. I do want to stress the importance that the Humble ISD Police Department has really kind of shown some leadership and service to the community. These awards represent a lot of hard work. All of us in law enforcement get into this to help our community. That's a very easy thing to say, but to do that effectively requires training and also networking with our state and local partners and federal agencies. All of us working together keeps the community safe, and I want to thank Chief Cook for his leadership, for making this a great department, and thank you for the award recipients. Thanks.
Our first recipient will be Lieutenant Erica Jordani. These awards that they're receiving are the FBI Trilogy Awards. They went through three series of leadership, supervision, and executive command, and it's something that not a lot of agencies have achieved. So we're very proud of these individuals. The next one will be Albert Casares. The next one will be Albert Casares. Sergeant Greg Lydian. Sergeant Jarrett McCormack. Again, we're very proud of these individuals. They could have chose to work for any law enforcement agency, but they chose to come and work for the best, Humble ISD Police Department.
And that concludes our accommodations and recognitions for tonight.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Fagan. We'll move into our next phase, and that will be questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. Just a little housekeeping here. Remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue is mentioned that is listed on the agenda, the board will defer discussion until appropriate time during the meeting. First on our list, we'll have, I believe this is Amelia Baldwin. Is she? Ms. Baldwin? If I butchered it, I apologize. Okay, thank you. Step up there to the mic. Thank you.
Hello. I'd like to mention a concern that many parents in the school district have, and it's about the stranger danger alerts and the safety of our children as they are going to and from school. We've noticed that there's been an increase this year. We have at least one or two alerts every week so far. We haven't missed a week without an alert. And just about, I think about three weeks ago, we had a situation where a man exposed himself in front of the elementary school. So we feel like it's just getting out of control, and a little more needs to be done. When the alerts come out, it'll mention what has happened, and at the end it will say, maybe there'll be an officer at the school the very next day. But I don't think most criminals would return the next day. I think we might need a little bit more than that to deter them and to mitigate the issue. So I have three suggestions, and I don't know, I'm sure there's other things that could help, but I think we might need more patrol in the area. While we do appreciate the police that are there helping the traffic move along, I think we need a little bit more than that. If we could have more patrol presence before, like an hour before and after school, just to patrol the communities in the area, because that's when these situations happen. If we could have cameras to take pictures of license plates and faces, because we've had situations where these predators will actually get in the car rider lines and request a child. And if we have more cameras, we can, and signs to let them know, "We're watching." Maybe that will help. Also, after-school programs could help. That means there's less children walking to and from school. The parents can drop them off and pick them up when they get off of work. There's less children walking, and that will cut back on it also. I know some states such as Oregon, they have a state-funded after-school program for their public schools. Children can just stay there and get help with homework, and it's in addition to clubs. So they are there every day before and after school, and it helps a lot. So I just think every child deserves to live in a safe community, and that parents shouldn't have to worry what's happening, especially when we're getting these alerts more frequently. We're just more concerned, and I think a little bit more needs to be done, and I hope that maybe a committee could be formed where they, you know, some people can get together to try to come up with ideas to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Okay, next we'll have Mr. Goodell, David. If you would approach the podium.
Mr. Cunningham, Dr. Fagan, board members, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is David Goodell, and I am the 2018-19 Humble ISD Council of PTAs President. We represent every local PTA in Humble ISD, which represents approximately 30 of our schools. First, thank you for your support of PTA and for our students. As part of Texas' largest student advocacy group, we are excited to be part of such a wonderful family here in Humble. With over 500,000 members statewide, it all starts here and at the local level. Tonight, I'm here to ask for your help individually. For our Council of PTAs to be on par with other comparable PTAs in Texas, we want to earn what's called the Golden Apple Award for our council. This award is awarded to a Council of PTAs where the ISD Board and all of the superintendents, direct reports are members of a local PTA. I'm here to ask you to join me and Dr. Fagan, who's already joined two local PTAs, thank you, in joining a local PTA. You can join tonight through joinpta.org, even if you don't have a student at a school that has a PTA. Please help us be part of the largest advocacy group for students in Texas. Joinpta.org. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, next we're going to go into our individual comment by board members, and I will start to my left with Ms. Lamont Dixon.
Okay, first of all, congratulations to Mr. Cunningham, our board president, for being elected on the TASB Executive Board for Secretary-Treasure. Congratulations. Congratulations also to the officers and Chief Cook's team for the FBI LITA Award and the Elementary Teachers of the Year. Congratulations to the superstaffers. So many wonderful things are happening in the district. Last, I want to actually, I just felt like I saw the portrait of a graduate today with the tiny homes for the homeless veterans. I just saw it in action. So I really want to commend the teachers and students at Kingwood Park High School and Summer Creek High School, Dr. Fagan, your team, and that vision that you've put forth. And also B.R.W. Architects for working with that entire group of students. My husband and my father are both veterans, so even that side of it was very moving to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Conrad. No comment. Thank you. Ms. Morrison.
I just want to ditto Member Dixon, Mrs. Dixon's remarks. Congratulations to our officers. They have a hard job, along with our superstaffers and our Teachers of the Year. Again, I state we have one of the best staffs in the State of Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Siddon.
Just, you know, again, ditto what's already been said. Of course, congratulations to the Teachers of the Year, the police, Mr. Cunningham for his new role with the State Association. But Dr. Fagan, I did have one question, and I think they've all left. On the Tiny Homes Project, I know they were looking for a plot of land, I think, to develop some type of a, well, for lack of a better word, neighborhood. Do you have any idea what size property they're looking for?
They're looking for like 50 acre. It's a large site to develop. They're trying to model after the Tiny Home project at Austin. So we're working with them. They've been working with the city. They've been kind of, and up to date, Ted Poe's offices reached out to them in regard to this handout late this afternoon. So it's a major plot of land that ultimately did run by another property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siddon. Mr. Lopez.
No comments, other than to ditto everyone else's. Congratulations, including to you, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Ms. Carney.
Yeah, in addition to the congratulations to Dr. Cunningham, I also want to congratulate Ms. Martina Dixon for leadership TASB as well. It's awesome. Happy birthday as well. In addition to the board, you know, recognition that we had at TASB, there was also a presentation that Dr. Fagan and Dr. Brown and Dustin presented as well on school safety that I attended. I wanted to commend you guys for doing a great job. I thought it was a really, really good presentation. I know there's a lot of focus on school safety at TASB, but I think your presentation really kind of hit home with a lot of very practical things that you guys were seeing. And I wish we didn't draw the short straw on room placement, because it seemed like it was so far in the corner of the convention that not enough people attended, but I think the people that were there were really, really engaged and asked a lot of questions that showed that they really, really, really appreciated all the effort you guys put in there. So I know there's a lot of questions we get from time to time of school safety, and as a parent, you know, it's something that's really, really important to us, and it's clear to me as a board member that you guys put a lot of time and effort and focus into that, and so we appreciate it. Great job. I just wanted to throw a plug in for the Lake Houston 10K-5K. Hopefully, some of you guys will be there this weekend. I will be there bright and early. Haven't really trained, so it might be a brisk walk. We'll see. You know, I'm ambitious. I signed up for the 10K. I probably should have toned it down a little bit. So we'll see. Fingers crossed. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Carney, and I really don't have much to say. I just wanted to just, I forgot to acknowledge the ROTC, the Atascocita High School folks, and so forgive me for that. And also for our superstaffers, Ms. Rivera, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Gonzalez, and David Goodell, PTA President. Yes, I will be signing up, so thank you, and I need that, well, yeah, I didn't. I've been busy, but.
We're not voting out this month. Next month, maybe.
Okay. Well, you got some friends up here, you know. They've already signed up, but we won't be signing up. And so with that, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. Well, it is October, so it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so I just wanted to mention that our high schools do a great job of participating with the Pink Out Game, and just want to encourage everyone to participate in that. The In the Pink Lunch that Memorial Herman puts on is always a really good one also, and so this district is so philanthropic. Last year, a lot of people came and helped us. When we needed it, we helped each other, even though we were going through so much ourselves. And as you can see with the Tiny Homes Project, or the In the Pink, or the PTAs, or all of the things that are going on, we're working on the Heart Walk also right now, the 10K-5K. Can't wait to see Mr. Carney run that. I believe Stephanie likes to start those races from scratch also. So in any case, I'm just very proud of the giving that happens in Humble ISD. It's not just a family that takes care of itself, but takes care of others. And I have to say that when those students came to me, they invited me down to Summer Creek High School and said, "We have this project. We want to pitch to you." And I said, "Okay," and they presented this huge vision of building these little tiny homes and using their architectural and CAD design skills, their construction and engineering skills. I agree completely. The portrait of a graduate was alive and well, and I had no idea if they would actually be able to move this, and we actually had the conversation in the room and said, "You know, this is not a small thing you're taking on. There will be many community folks who will need to join together with you and be part of this project and buy into it," and they were like, "Absolutely, we're going to do it." And one of the things, the teachers have done a fantastic job. They send me emails all the time, and they were sending emails during the summer showing students who were going to college. I mean, they didn't, they didn't need to participate anymore, and they're still participating because the learning is real, their hearts are in it for real, they want to see it happen. It's part of their passion for what they're doing and part of Humble ISD. So the philanthropic part of our school district is alive and well, and now it's also embedded in the learning in so many different ways. So couldn't be more proud of everybody who's doing everything, and in addition to that, giving back to other people. So that's what I wanted to say tonight. Congratulations on your TASB statewide Secretary-Treasure position. Very impressive.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on into our Board Association Committees and the Audit Committee. There will be no report. Looking for Building and Planning, Ms. Lamont Dixon, Chair.
Okay, well, I sent you all a copy of the Board Building and Planning summary. There are lots of parts of that that's in negotiation, a lot in the works. One of the items I will be pulling when we move to the consent agenda, so that's it at this time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Our Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Siddon.
Yeah, just a real quick update on our FEMA and insurance issues. You may have read the local media and seen on TV and so forth, a $45 million grant that we've been given from FEMA on the federal level. Just to clear up any misconceptions, we have not received that money. So just want to make sure everybody knows that, and I don't see any member of the media here to hear my big speech here. So I hope you're watching, I hope you're watching on TV there. So the way this works, FEMA has sent $45 million to the Texas Division of Emergency Management for Humble ISD's benefit. Now, we are currently working with that group to find out exactly what we're going to have to do in order to receive that money. So that money is there. It's allocated for us, to us, but we still don't know what I's to dot and what T's to cross in order to get that check. So just so everyone understands, it's been in all the newspapers. It's been on some of the local news channels, but we actually have not received that money. What we have received, we've received $3 million last year. We've received $2.7 million this year from FEMA, and roughly about $30 million from insurance. So 30, that's what, 35, almost $36 million, again, of our 100-plus million dollar deficit from Hurricane Harvey. So just to clear that up, and if you have any questions, I will kick it over to Mike Seal, our CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Siddon. Now we'll go ahead and go with our former Legislative Committee, now called Advocacy Committee. Chair, Ms. Morrison.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Siddon for making the presentation on the Advocacy Committee last month, and I want to say that very much so, we're getting ready and getting geared up for our December meeting. And also out of our last meeting, we are very fortunate now that the cooperation between all the different law enforcement agencies, that they are beginning to drive through our parking lots, they're going in our buildings. We have a lot more visible presence of law enforcement now around our schools, especially with the elementaries and the secondaries. So I'm very proud of the cooperation between our law enforcement agency and the others that are our other locals, so I just thought I'd report back on that, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Carney, the Education Foundation.
Sure. Just want to give a quick update on the Employee Campaign. So throughout the school year, the foundation and Humble ISD partner on many projects to support innovation and creativity in the classroom. With big ideas from our educators and financial support from donors, the foundation achieves its mission of inspiring innovation and enhancing academic opportunities to create the foundation for lifelong learning. In the month of October, the foundation asks Humble ISD employees to demonstrate their support of this mission with a donation to the Employee Campaign. You guys may have seen the brochure for the Employee Campaign. Anyone familiar on here? That's good-looking people on there.
Got some good-looking people on there? So this is the year's employee campaign brochure and it features Norman Funderburke, he's nineteen seventy graduate of UMBLE High School, Dr. Fagan, Lynette Calfee, nineteen sixty-two graduate of Charles Bender High School, Nayla, the daughter of Dr. Fagan's assistant, Norma Ventura, which was formerly on my T-ball team that I coached. And my amazing son Blake is right in the middle, putting his arms around the two young ladies. Uh, and Bailey, the daughter of Ashley Walker, who works in the Community Development Team, is also on the brochure. I'd say that is a fine-looking picture, wouldn't you?
Hey, you're right, all right.
So speaking as the liaison to the school board, I just wanna thank all of our foundation reps who are helping to share information about this campaign in our schools this month and a special thanks to all of our employees for their continuous commitment to excellence and service to all UMBLE ISD students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Uh, Ms. Dixon, Super Neighborhood Council, Kingwood.
Uh, first I'd like to thank Colin Carney for attending, uh, accepting my atten, uh, invitation to attend the meeting. I think you got, probably got a lot out of it, especially being a Kingwood resident like myself. Um, just wanted to share that Lone Star College, Kingwood, they are going to have their ribbon cutting on February fifteenth at nine AM to open their buildings. Um, they're inviting the community to be a part of that. Um, early voting begins October twenty-second, so be sure to vote, cast your vote. Um, the dredging has begun, I don't know if you've gone over any of the bridges or highway, you can see it happening, it's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Very excited about that. And last, the next, next Super Neighborhood Council meeting is October seventeenth and just to let you know, these meetings are open to the public and the speaker on October seventeenth is going to be Mr. Eddie Irgoyne. He is the Project Manager of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, uh, for the West Works Sanderson River Dredging Project. So it's a good time to ask very, um, intimate questions in a small setting if you have questions for him. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. And I'm gonna go back, 'cause I did skip one, but besides us getting ready to have our, uh, team building on November third, uh, Mr. Lopez, anything else to bring before the, uh, for the Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
Uh, no, just be there on November third. Uh, we'll be out, uh, by noon because my son has a football game that begins at one. So. But if y'all wanna go to Turner afterwards and watch my son play football, it'd be great. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, sir.
I know this is out of order, but.
Yeah, the meeting's gonna be, well, it's gonna be here or it's gonna, we have to decide. It's gonna be in the new building? A welcome center, okay. I knew it was gonna be one of these two buildings, there you go.
Okay.
Karen, can you just send around the reminder to everybody, tell them exactly where it's gonna be and the time again, it's nine AM, right? Nine to noon.
Appreciate it, sir. Yes, sir.
This is out of order, but I've gotta make this announcement, uh, I am now a proud member of the K Park PTA.
Okay. I'm, I'm coming, David. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on with our actions, uh, action items from our closed session. Uh, Ms. Dixon, I ask if you would assist me, please.
Okay. I move to approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Up? All opposed by the same? Okay, we're good. Now, Ms. Dixon, I'm gonna ask if you would help me here with our consent agenda as we go through this. And starting with Consider Agenda 5A, the approval of minutes, uh, for the regular board meeting that was held on Tuesday, September eleventh, two thousand eighteen. That seems like that will be consent. Okay. Yes, yeah, okay. It doesn't matter, yeah. So we're gonna go ahead and say it's just approved, okay? Good. All right, B, approval minutes for the Special Board Meeting held on Thursday, September twentieth, two thousand eighteen. That will be a consent. Okay, 5C, goods and services, non-construction services exceeding fifty thousand in the aggregate or twenty-five thousand individually. Are we good with that? Okay. 5D, construction and construction-related purchases. Okay, consent. 5E, budget transfers and amendments. F, bond fund transfer and amendments. G, tax refunds. H, two thousand eighteen tax rule. Consent. I, delinquent tax attorney contract. J, waiver of PNI. K, change order number two, Rose Elementary Construction. That's consent. L, the sale of point zero eight eight four acres in Harris County to the Texas Department of Transportation.
Pull that.
That will be pull item. M, program management services for the two thousand eighteen bond. Consent. N, memorandum of understanding with other police agencies. Consent. O, board authorization for inter-local agreements. P, resolution for extracurricular status of four-H organizations for-H. That's consent. Q, resolution, resolution for credit by exam. R, targeted improvement plan for Northdale Elementary School. S, policy revisions, this is final action. Uh, Ms. Dixon, if you would, help me go over the motion for the consent agenda.
Yes. Mr. President, I move that the board approve the following items by consent. 5A through 5K and 5M through 5S.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, all have heard. Questions, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed by the same? Okay, motion carries, good. Okay, I think we can go back over, there was one, I lost, I think that was.
Um, 5L.
5L, do I have a motion? Scott, a second. Okay, Ms. Dixon, I believe you pulled that one.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain and hopefully Nolan can back me up if I need more information. Um, so TechDOT, uh, is offering to buy, um, a portion of land, uh, near Oak Forest Elementary School. Um, they are widening FM nineteen sixty at that corner, so they want to add a turning lane. So if you're coming from, Mr. Sidon, if you can help me, is that north? You're coming from Westlake Houston Parkway headed towards?
If you're, if you're going, going west.
West.
Nineteen sixty.
Yes.
It's, uh, it's that corner, they wanna add a turning lane.
Correct.
Right there, so it will, it, yes, we desperately need it.
Yes.
Uh, the idea is, is that, that, uh, one thing we're going back and forth on is that they're gonna have to move, uh, the utility lines and it could potentially take out one or two trees, so, uh, I was looking at the contract and I think Mr. Corre, he handled that aspect of it as well.
That is correct and, and, uh, they're offering, uh, an extra, uh, money in order to make sure that we have that barrier and that, uh, sound piece and, and, or get safety for, uh, for some.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? All those opposed by the same? Okay, motion carries. Now, I believe we have a action item, 6A, uh, is going to be a motion to approve the ordinance to set tax rate for two thousand eighteen, adopting a total tax rate of a dollar fifty-two per hundred dollars of taxable value. That basically is going to be dollar seventeen for the M and O and thirty-five cents for INS. I'm gonna ask Ms. Dixon, if you will, if you got any more else, anything else to read there? I'm just reading what's on there, so.
Do I have to? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the ordinance to set tax rate for two thousand eighteen, adopting a total tax rate of one dollar fifty-two cents per one hundred dollars of taxable value. That's one hun, one dollar seventeen cents, M and O and thirty-five cents, INS. Second.
Okay, it's been properly motion and second.
It's the same, yes.
It's the same.
It's the same. It has not changed.
No, we're not reaching a zero increase.
I was, I was, I was gonna ask if there's any questions? Comments?
Zero, zero increase.
All right, very good. Good job, Finance Committee, good job, Mr. Seal. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand, all opposed by the same? Motion carries. Okay, we've got some information items, is there anything that's, anybody would like to hear on? Policy revisions? Seeing none? You got any questions? Get with the Superintendent, Dr. Fagan. How about the Instructional Material Adoption Selection Committee? Okay, we've got that. Uh, Financial Services Report. Okay, once again, get with the appropriate administrator, Dr. Fagan. Uh, eight, closed meeting, how about any future topics for the board business? Mr. Sidon.
Not necessarily the future, but another special announcement, uh, Mr. Lopez is now a proud member of the Summer Creek PTA.
I'm trying to get there.
Well, I'm actually twice a member, my wife just told me that we're already members, but I'm now in my name, so. Twice, okay.
Okay, okay. Well, shall I ask who isn't a member yet up here?
I am doing it right, okay, babe? I'm at the checkout. I'm at the checkout right now for Summer Creek High School.
Okay, okay.
I'm joining Creekwood PTA, I'm already a member of the Kingwood Park.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
And didn't you say that to get the Apple Award, it's in my direct reports also?
Yes.
Oh, good. Evaluation criteria Z.
So we're gonna repeat that again.
You're multitasking up here and you guys, come on. We're multitasking, you guys need to.
Okay. Seeing none, no other board business, we will now call this meeting closed, as time is eight oh three. Everybody be safe.